Just to be clear, a quick update before we get started. The student from West High School was located in Tiffin. So the police. I'm sure you were all aware of that. Sure. We'll get rolling here. So we've got several documents attached in Word docs. And we've got a couple of things for you to look at when we pull the main sheet up. Craig and Dwayne are here and they're going to help walk you through it with me. But we wanted to give you a one-page summary, if you will, so you can take a look at it and hopefully better understand where we're at, where we think we're going with it. So if you look at the items, I'll blow this up a little bit like you just seen. The items at the top of the page here in peach and purple are those items that have been completed or in process that are funded through our SAVE and PEPL dollars. SAVE items in peach, PEPL dollars in purple. At the bottom there, you see both the initial approval in December of 13, the updated approval in April of 15. Good opportunity right here to remind you that these projects, where they initially approved in 13, were not approved in an order. They were simply approved as these were the projects that we wanted to complete. So as we began completing those and building out a timeline, one of the things that we did in 15 was knowing which projects went at the end of the list. We went through and applied the appropriate construction inflation factor to that, and hence you see the differential in the projected costs at the bottom. And then over here, January 17, where we are today, you see there the actual costs completed and in progress. Finally, on the far right-hand side, you see the start dates for each of those projects. So again, those are the projects that are completed or in progress right now. As we scroll down here, this next set of green projects are those projects that were part of the facility master plan in 2013, projected value here, the revised projections in 2015. And what we'd like to talk about tonight is in the bar column, which is the 2017 plan. Those items that are in green, that maintain the consistent color in process, you'll note the same date and the same dollar amount as was projected in 2015. Those items in gray have either had their timeline changed, you see that on the far side, or in that second from the right-hand column, you see a change in the scope and scale of the project, which could be up or down. For instance, you see Garner moving down, you see the New North Liberty Elementary moving up. And so we've got projected revisions in there. Again, in 2015, when that was approved by the board, that price tag was coming in at just under $191 million. The revised price tag we have in here is coming in just over $184 million. So with that as a real quick, brief introduction to where we're at tonight, I think I'll stop and ask if you have questions.
Just I'll say one thing, so in 13, they weren't in order, inflation adjusted, and we were still working the athletics patch, right?
Correct.
So 15, those two big things, adjusted for inflation, added to the athletic's master plan, future use, and put in order.
Just to clarify, so that last column, is that when the project starts or when it's done?
This is when it starts.
Okay.
Those are start dates.
So what's the new inflation rate, or are there any entry changes?
Well, I can answer that one. I just went back through the estimated costs and reevaluated the square footage that we needed and lowered the cost. It was plus 15, it was given five years inflation, it should only hit three.
So the scope changed or is adjusted for inflation?
Just adjusted for inflation and cost per square foot.
Oh, it's not, oh, it's working.
So the scope is the same.
I just went through and evaluated the construction cost, plus I adjusted the proper inflation factor.
So the scope is the same.
Scope is the same.
So some of these that are sooner or later, is the difference in the number simply because of the inflation factor?
Some of it.
So like, for example, is that going to be a different project, or is it just because it's sooner that it costs less?
Sooner, plus I also reevaluated the cost, and it was over inflation too.
That's fine.
Garner, you have an example for you, I don't later, which you would assume would cost more, but the scope and scale was reduced, so it costs less.
So nothing is changing at North Central?
No.
Exactly the same project.
So if it starts in 19, when's it done?
Most projects last a year.
Or I assume a year, but is that okay to assume?
Well, except for the high schools, it is now.
All right, so if it starts in 19, it's going to be down to 20.
Should be. We intend to hold it true for you.
We did provide a document with, that's a summary of all these changes. And it elaborates a little bit more on the scope of what's being done. This document here, so. But you'll notice that we've moved Man back to its original timeline on the facility master plan, from what we were thinking. We took a look at that and we were fortunate to have our city come in and talk with us a little bit more about working and the partnership that we can have and things like that. We think we'll be able to do Lincoln and Man together now, like we were before, so we're going to keep that on schedule. And also Shimick, where we were originally thinking that it was going to take two construction years, Dwayne and his wizardry figured out that we would be able to put the ten plex over there. And so that one, we were able to move back to its original timeline and be able to move enough of the students out where we could renovate the building within that year timeframe that we were thinking of originally. So those were two things that we were able to settle, for the most part, on, that we had recommended or had conversation with you here recently about some of our concerns that we might have to change, but I think we settled in our minds that we can go back to the original plan on those ideas.
Can you tell us what made the number on Man go down?
Yeah, I was just evaluating the costs that were assigned to the building and the inflation factors, and I just went, I went back from square one and just refigured it.
Same project though?
Same project.
Are you using Longfellow as a reference, or what's?
Longfellow's a reference.
So Longfellow will come in on your budget?
It did, and it will. You want to ask about Shimick?
I do, just because Gristle Place is a choked arterial, I just want to know. We have a copy that's going to drop.
There's a couple of things there, Shimick was located in the ten plex on the site. So Savannah and I, the school principal, met yesterday, and we're going to go to the PTO and ask them to relocate the playground in a different location. The ten plex will go where that wooden structure is now, and it will fit. And once you get to the bargaining lot, it's almost leveled back to that playground.
Sure.
Okay, so that's one issue. The other is Gristle Place, and there's kind of a high center there, if you bring a long trailer, and it's going to want to dip. So I'm thinking I'm just going to build a temporary ramp on top of the street and flatten it out and leave it out there. It'll work.
That's wizardry.
I haven't got it done yet.
That's why I said what I said.
So I walked the whole site yesterday and walked the street out and decided we can do it.
Wow, that's awesome.
We may only move two houses and six telephone poles, but we'll get there.
Cut down a few trees.
Kidding, Jim.
I know, I know, just kidding.
No, I mean, we can do it.
The Seven Tree Forest?
The Seven Tree Forest will not be touched.
Going back to Man, I remember there was some talk about parking and maybe alternatives to creating a parking lot, and did those talks still work?
Yeah, we actually, we met today with city officials, elected and appointed, and we're very confident that we will be able to come up with several iterations of potential facility improvements that we'll be able to take a look at, just strictly internally, within the city and the school district officials, but then also externally, as we go out and reach out to the community to help them in the design process. So our discussion today focused on looking at current footprint, modified and modified plus, so we've got a couple of different options out there to look at, and looking at how we can work with them as partners to make sure that we get to the equitable learning environment that we want for all the students, but do so in a way that's respectful of the neighborhood and the integrity of the historical components that are part of North Market Park.
And are the results of that going to potentially change any of these numbers?
Not significantly. The goal still is to make sure that the internal structure that provides that educational environment is compatible with what we're doing in other buildings. As we look externally, we had long conversations about parking and options for parking, hard scape and soft scape play areas for students, bus pickup and drop-off, parent parking, ADA parking. So we had lots and lots of conversation today about multiple different options that may be available to us. We have some tasks that were sent back to the city to take a look at. They actually have to have some conversations with the county and the state level for a couple of the solutions that we proposed. We're going to go back into it on our end and look for comparability, footprint, design pieces, as it compares to Longfellow, so that you actually visually see what the footprint might look like and what our options might be going north and west and south. So we're going to try to put all that together. We actually talked to the city council today about having a joint work session with the school district and the city councilors, so that we can share some of those iterations and get some feedback, both from you as board members and from them as city councilors.
So possibly we have something that we could actually look at and see?
We're hoping to have it here just before, just after spring break. So the meeting that we're talking about, the cities are trying to coordinate calendars is beginning April, so hopefully we'll be ready to roll prior to that point.
So just, I'm just going to, so for me, it was myself, Latasha, Mary Thorpart, Susan Mills, Jeff, Steve, Craig, Dwayne, and I agree, I think we had time objectives, timeline needs to maintain. We talked the joint work session, and then also just reinforced, you know, we will go through a design process, that'll be later, right? That will engage the community, and like we always do, teachers and organization and everything else, so we talked about that, having a very collaborative design process. Because it could be you'll take four options, you know, it could be multiple, well, you will have multiple options tonight.
Right.
And there's some key questions to see, need to weigh in on, I don't know, there's some key questions we will need to weigh in on. But very instructive meeting to make sure that we're aligned with the timeline, so that was kind of it for tonight.
There's one more sheet that we put together for you as far.
One quick one. Often, it's not even a very big project on our FMP, simply because there was a major renovation done prior to the FMP process, and it's involving Horn Elementary School. There were some questions at one of our first listening posts regarding Horn, that, just to comment that on the need transforming the learning environment timeline, that Horn was overlooked on that. So if we can get that added back on, that would be great. I think it's a simple add. I know it's only about a $1, $1.3 million project, and the only other thing that I've heard, just because this is probably my last opportunity to have it put into this, is I know that when we did the renovation at Horn, there was some flooring, a little up used in a portion of the building. I don't know if it would be part of PEPL or part of FMP, but there's been, they've used like hard surface flooring instead of.
They use the Mondo flooring?
Yes, that's what it's called, and.
They're having issues with it?
Well, I think it's, I've been told that it's not desirable.
I'll go again.
Lovely.
Actually, that's a great segue. The next sheet that Craig was referencing is this page that's listed as future facility projects for consideration. And so these are things that were not included in 13, not discussed in 15, but as we move forward, there are things that we presume at some point in time, the board's going to want to address. So there's no proposal here that these are the kinds of things that need to be added to the facility master plan as you consider the bond, but they are things that we think that as a board, you just need to be cognizant of moving forward, because as you look at a rolling 10-year plan for the facilities master plan, you're going to want to add these in subsequent years, such that they can get calendared and we can be prepared.
Well, we could add them in at a time, term of time.
Do that?
Right, and they don't need to be part of the Geo bond per se, but.
Right.
I'm just saying, in 2013, July, we approved the plan, so you could say, you know, we're aligned with these projects, commercial land, and odds are they'd happen later.
You could add them to the plan, but not add them to the bond.
Or just enough to find the time, yes.
Can you just help me understand why Tate, who has no gyms, doesn't make the list?
We have Tate, again, if I go back here.
We're replacing gyms, we're adding third gyms, and then we have a school that's a gym.
So Tate, the gym that, and the classrooms that we're proposing, were not in the 2013 original plan, so we have not added anything to the plan. So when you look at the 15, again, that's the roll-up and the projections and the addition of the athletics, which were part of that discussion at that point in time. So we haven't proposed adding anything to it. These are things that we want you to consider, but what you saw in that initial sheet are only those things that were on the plan in 15. So these are things that we think are important, and that would include the gymnasium and the extra classrooms at Tate. There's several other projects in here that we're very invested in, but they weren't part of that 15 piece, and so we didn't take the liberty to add them to it. We want them here for your consideration. As Chris said, if you want to add them, wonderful, if you want to.
I think that should, I mean, I guess, you tell me what I'm missing here, but I don't get why we would take a school that has zero athletic space, you know? I mean, during the winter, they're, they don't have anything. And that would be like top of the list.
And we do all our PD offsite right now, so we're very fortunate. We've got some wonderful community partners, Hillboxes and others that are working with us to create that opportunity for our students, but helping that's indoor space.
And that's, you know, offsite is, you know, okay, but I guess then there's some kids at Tate that would appreciate that the place indoors were also seen.
Yeah.
Just as they do at our other schools.
Just because it's not the Geo bond doesn't mean we couldn't do it on save or PEPL.
Say, if it passes.
Well, no. Stop there, no. I mean, there's, there's always so much we've got, all getting saved every year. If we do this Geo bond, you could do things on save or PEPL without necessarily extension. Now, I'm not disagreeing, I have no problem moving Tate up to be on the Geo bond, so I'm not disagreeing. I'm just making sure that we understand, if we say this is all the bond and the Geo bond classes, there's still PEPL and save available. So for example, if a future school board decided, I don't want to tolerate these, there will be some save, not the dollars, you know, as well. Not that we need to feel like doing, but everything in the bond, because, right, absolutely. Actually, you can do it at both. Now, is anybody not aligned to moving Tate into the Geo bond and the plan?
Can you tell me a little bit more about the couple pieces? I'm just saying, because we already are telling our community 200 million, and then we're adding three.
184.
184. It went down.
I went, I was, I'm sorry, I re-rolled. Around, about, yeah, I'm just saying, that's great that we were able to bring that down. If we could put that on there, fine, but I mean, it would be great also to start thinking about how we're using the PEPL as well, as well as the Geo bond. I think it's important that in this planning that we're also talking about, how that PEPL is being used for us.
So half the PEPL gets used in just the one second fund alone, right?
Oh, yeah.
I'm just saying, it's not like there's zero dollars, it's not like there's a lot, you know? It's not like you take them all and do them.
No, I'm just, I'm just saying, like, I think it's important that we're still, okay, Geo bond over to the side, what are we still doing with those, you know, PEPL dollars that we have available? And I think that that would be a great way to also invest in that gymnasium.
So the discussion of addition of gymnasium at Tate actually keeps in line with the original 2013 plan, which was athletic study yet TBD. So we didn't have the athletic study at that point. In 2015, we had the athletic data, but we did not have Tate incorporated into that.
It wasn't. I think it's within the.
I think it's absolutely.
It's within the spirit of 2013.
Right, I think it's in the within the 2000, that's what I'm getting at, I think it's within the 2013 spirit. It's not Mission Creek, it's not that we're adding, 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 it's that we're keeping with the athletic portion. It was 2013 FMP with the athletics TBD. It's a lot of.
I'm not going to defend the assessments that were done, but I think there's probably a lack of knowledge on those architects that went through and the engineers, as to the real purpose of Tate, how it's used as an alternative school.
Right.
And it's evolved over time, so.
Because at the time, they just said minor repairs.
Right, it was a hundred and something.
Hundred and eight thousand dollars, minor repairs. But the way the school's used is more significant than what they may have, I get it.
Did you guys at all talk to time in for Tate?
No, we did not talk time in for it.
This Borlog item, so that's like in addition to, there is a Borlog addition in the FMP already, right?
There's a very small number allotted to Borlog, this is an additional one.
Do you still have a hundred and fifty seats going on there that weren't already there?
Yes.
Well, I guess if we repurpose that to art and music, if we let the other two rooms in.
Well, art and music is what's in this post-plan.
That's what the school needs.
Is that moving what was going to happen in Borlog off into the future?
Well, I guess that recommendation came from me, there was four classrooms, we looked at the projected enrollments, I don't know that you're really going to need them right away, but what they do need is the art and science, and if you do that, it will, you'll free up two classrooms and increase the capacity by 50.
But you got, the idea that we're going to go new music and art rooms on every building?
Well, I think, I think, my recommendation would be to the board, any changes to facility master plan from this point going forward, is that you really look closely at the art and music rooms, because what I've done as a result of the temple study, they're sorely deficient in most of the older buildings. The newer buildings, they're, they're okay, they're as large as they should be, but they can be better. So I think from this point forward, that's, it's better to look at the specialty spaces and then repurpose those spaces in the classrooms.
Part of our, yeah, maybe a better way to think about that, Chris, is that in our dialogue, when we've said, if a building needs two new classrooms, that the building is better off if the two new classrooms that are built are art and music, and art and music are repurposed into gen ed classrooms. So rather than building two new classrooms and leaving art and music where they are, we build new art and music classrooms and repurpose the art and music into gen ed. So you get two additional classrooms, but you get two curriculum-specific classrooms for art and music.
There's one other advantage, Steve, and that is the location of them, because what I've learned is that most of the older schools are using modular classrooms for the band because of the noise, and you can, you can put them on to the end of a building and isolate them with a couple of doors, you kind of isolate the noise as well.
I guess what worries me about that is sort of what you were saying, which is, we don't know if we're going to need two new classrooms at all at Borlog, six years out.
Yeah, but I think some additions are based on capacity and some are based on program. Just to me, it's just based on program.
But it also needs.
Seems to be different from what you were just saying, you know? We're going to build the two new rooms, if we need two new classrooms.
See, it's both.
Normal quality in the room.
You get both this way. You get it run and grow, and you get the proper program space.
Maybe I'm confused, same page maybe as you are. So the 1.6 million Borlog, that's in the 2022, that says on this sheet that it's classroom addition, HVAC upgrades, how is that different again from the future project, future want?
Is it going to happen now?
Borlog was, oh, in 15, in 15, the plan was to add four classrooms.
Right.
So what we're saying now is that you can add science and art, or excuse me, art and music. I need to go back and look at my notes to make sure.
So you're saying all of that would occur past the seven-year record that we have for whatever system?
Yeah, the.
Is it supposed to happen within that time? Hang it out, put it off in the future for.
So like, I know you have 2022, right, Borlog? And then on this slide, we have Borlog with adding music and art rooms, 1.97, so that's.
That's two and two.
So.
That's four rooms. The number 1.9 would be four rooms. To make that kind of comparison, we did four preschool and kindergarten rooms at Van Allen just recently, and four rooms cost us to make four, and that's been two years ago, so the main nine is right.
Okay, I'm still not getting it.
I'm thinking that I need to go back and read my notes and make sure that this included it. I know it included renovating two rooms inside the building, but it may have been two rooms in addition to the art and music, based on the number, so I'll go back and look, make sure.
So four rooms is two and two.
Four rooms total, two and two instead of four.
Is it more efficient to do it all at one time? I mean, why would you split it up?
You could put two on one end and two on the other. You don't have to put all four together.
So they would be at the same location?
Could be some efficiency, but not a lot.
You're wrong, then you would put two at one time, so.
Based on the number, what I'm telling you is I need to go back and reevaluate my notes, but I'm thinking at one time that it's two plus two.
Because you presented it to be that way.
Yeah.
And we have enrollment projections that support the need for that?
I'm looking at the projections on Borlog, and, you know, it's 10 years out since 327. The capacity we have on it right now is 451. I know, I know I don't take those without a grain of salt.
So here's how the real world's going to work, the enrollment report is not great for new development.
Again?
Enrollment report's not great for new development, right? It's based on the kids you got there now and guessing.
Enrollment or the projections?
The projections, of course. The projections do not account for new development.
At all?
For the most part.
Isn't that what they're supposed to do for us?
Yes.
What about all the counting plaits and everything?
So, yeah, there's an element of that, but it generally is not as accurate as.
Well, I'm not disagreeing, because I know those numbers are 10 years out, and Bernie stopped it.
I would just say, I have no concern with it's all Borlog, just on the modular.
How are you going to defend it to the public, who says, well, why are you putting more seats on the school when your enrollment's way below the capacity? Yeah, I guess it's your criteria for the, probably children's projections is on page three of the enrollment report. Well, but the enrollment report, at least in some schools, the numbers seem to be higher than just the AAR projection, which is, they must be trying to show growth in some way.
I just, I pulled up the Swiss Army sheet, it's either or, you're either doing one or the other. So it's an addition of 100 seats, and it's either four classroom addition or music and art plus two classrooms. So that's what's, that's what this is, so it's this or that.
Let's do this, for 1.7 million?
Yeah.
Or the 1.9 million?
Right, right.
The reason it's higher is because those two rooms will cost a little bit more to build than two classrooms.
Go a little bit bigger.
So if you're going to do it in '22, just.
It's not two projects, it's in either or.
So we decide, whether we take it out, we need it.
Well, the recommendation is to go from four classrooms to two plus two.
I see. But that doesn't say two plus two, it just says two.
It does, and I, I had to revert my math to off, I have to go back and revise my math, so, but it's based on the number, I can tell you it's two plus two.
So you probably should just take this 1.7 million from the plan and make it, you know, reward.
Be a smart time to do it.
So I'm trying to understand, I did not realize that the projections did not include new development.
I missed that, what was the?
The projections don't include new developments, that was new to me.
Enrollment projections?
Yeah.
Your enrollment projections include new developments that can be calculated, so think around Liberty High School. So where there are developers who have purchased property, planted that property, you've got an idea of how many individual sites, and they can calculate a yield rate for that, and they can give us then an anticipated load for that. For undeveloped property, though, that hasn't been planted, they don't forecast growth for that particular. So think about around North Liberty on the west side of Liberty, right? There's, there's quite a few 40s out there that are still being farmed, so those don't carry any yield for us. So we, we know where developments have been approved by the city or platted, the plaits have been approved, and we can calculate the yields on those, and those are included in projections, but undeveloped land is not included. So, and that's one of the reasons why you do it every two years, because a lot of developers are purchasing land and plating it in advance of the actual building.
But we're not, here we're saying we're not going to, we're going to lock it in, we're not going to do it every. We're not gonna do it every, we're not gonna decide. We can't change mine. After we, after it's in the bond, it's in the bond.
Same as everything else, it's five, six years.
Yeah, but there's other places where there's developments too that are coming. But, I mean, how do we know which is gonna be the most, the biggest priority? Two years from now, four years from now, six years?
So you're doing it over two years.
Just another comparable for you. If you look at the list that's up there now, the very first project, Alexander Elementary, that's a four classroom addition for 1.5 million.
And that we need today.
We need that today. Cause I've got a bunch of them and created two classrooms in the building, so. But the point I'm making is that it was just hours out of my card. Four classrooms is about a million and a half. But if you add the art, it goes to one million, okay?
Can we, can we talk about Trek, maybe not so much the building per se, but about what those changes look like at West and Will? I mean, there's this excitement that happens, right, when there's just moving to this new building of this new building, right? There's excitement. And so I don't wanna leave these kids, I mean, some of them won't even. Trek is kind of, you know, you don't know. I mean, homeschool folks, I understand in their perspective, you know, we've been there. But like, can we talk about what that looks like when they're transitioning off of some high school? Can there be parking available for folks that are, you know, visiting?
Sure, and maybe from conversations that I've had with Matt, with Craig, with Dwayne, with others in the district, I don't wanna jump the gun and say West is where you're sending programs per se. One of the things that we're doing is we're looking at the programming inside Trek and maybe just, and I'm sure many of you are aware of this, but maybe just a quick reminder for you. So when the board decided to close Roosevelt and reapportion those attendance areas when they opened Borlaug, there was initial discussion about disposing of the building. And after quite some time and a lot of indecision, there was a determination not to dispose of the building. And at that point in time, owning it and maintaining it, we looked at what alternatives there were for the space. And we had many off-site programs, a lot of them were in storefronts around Iowa City. We were paying rent on those. We had concerns about lack of secretarial support, lack of access to food service, mail delivery, all that that comes with being in a school. And so we cavitated our rents on those storefronts and aggregated all those programs under one roof. And I think sometimes that's, that's lost to people who don't know that history, is that there are a lot of different programs, very different purposes within there. And so from that standpoint, there might be some that are better situated at a high school. There might be some that are better situated at junior high. Might be some that are better situated at Tate. There might be some that are better situated off-site completely. And so we're gonna go through that process. And to be honest with you, the lead testing brought that to the fore. When we started looking at the concerns that came up through the lead testing, we started talking about the money that we had allocated for Roosevelt. We know that that's really a Band-Aid. We actually, back in thirteen, they did an analysis of the building in terms of what it would cost to bring it up to speed. You're talking over ten million dollars. So what we had in here was a piecemeal that would allow us to hold our ground, if you would, but not make the kind of improvements that actually provide the kind of learning environment we want for those students. And so we looked at that and said, is that a wise investment of district dollars? Or as we expand the number of seats that are available at the secondary level, should we start looking at space that's available there and look at new homes for those programs? And that's everything from our homeschool program. And we've got kids at Trek that are school phobic. You know, is putting them back into a school building going to help them with that transition or not? So we need to think about those kinds of things. So we've just started the dialogue about if we begin to look at those programs with the individual hats that they wear, where might we best place those? So we're really in the embryonic stages of having the conversations. And like I said, it really came to the fore as we went through the water testing. And so we have this on here because we want you to think about it like we are in the sense that should we start planning for the closure of Trek and the replacement of those programs in other district facilities or other facilities? And if so, we're gonna ramp that process up. But we wanted to put that out here so that we could have that conversation with you. You know, we're increasingly concerned about what could be long-term safety issues with students there. We already have all kinds of issues of heating and cooling and other stuff like that. So we know that those are challenges that we're facing moving forward. So our recommendation to you is that we start looking at new homes for those programs. But just like with Transition Services Center, that's a collaborative process. It involves discussion with staff, other municipal entities in town, you know, we work with JCO, others like that. We need to talk to them about it too. But we didn't wanna get too far down that path until we have a conversation with you guys first.
Well, and I think it's important to, I believe the initial study on the building was done by Shai Patery.
Actually, B L D D came in and did a look at it when we had.
Well, when we closed the school.
Shai did it when we closed.
Shai did it when we closed the school.
Yeah.
Then the property was tried, we tried to sell the property. We tried, we didn't get the money that we estimated we'd give it.
Tried to sell it.
Tried to sell it.
With a bunch of conditions.
Well, okay. Tried to sell it. We couldn't get the money to have it that we did. And Shai Patery tested the water and found the way. But I think there's some truly unique opportunities with that property that we have never really tapped into, which, you know, location, location, location. And the ravines around it, which is an in-town timber, which gives us all kinds of educational opportunities, which we have not utilized with our students for an outdoor classroom and those types of things. And I'm real reluctant to pull the plug on that just because, you know, and granted, we won't tolerate lead in any of, lead in a lot of our buildings, but it's not insurmountable to remedy that. And just coming in at the last minute to shave the whole way off of it. Like I say, I think that that property has some great opportunities for us in the future.
Couple of thoughts, Ray Phil. The homeschool program that's there is using the ravine for outdoor classrooms. I've had the instructors tell me that, that they enjoy that. They go down there, they use it a lot.
Good. Well, that's fantastic. But I think we can, I think it can be utilized much, much more alone.
From my perspective, you have two dismembered buildings that have been attached to each other there, okay? You have a fifties vintage building that was built very inexpensively. And you have a nineteen thirties vintage building that's in serious deterioration because of deferred maintenance. The roofing, the masonry tuck pointing, the plaster on the inside is suffering from moisture penetration. It, that four million dollar budget would put air conditioning in a building and it would only touch and scratch the surface. It may cost more to truly renovate that building than to replace it. So you have to separate the building from the site. We're not talking about the pluses or minuses of that site. We're talking about the pluses and minuses of that building, the way it's built.
Kim, do we want a bigger, kind of a bigger, greater scope discussion?
Can we just add one thing to that yet?
Yeah, be here.
I do wanna make sure that we don't neglect the fact that we do have homeschoolers that rely on that program. I don't know how many kids are coming into our district for that, but we know kids are going out of our district for that. And if we don't provide the service level that they want, we're gone.
Right.
With their money.
But and I, moving them out of the trailer that they used to live in was a significant upgrade to the quality of the program, the space that's available for them. We know that's helped retain some of our homeschoolers and maybe add some. So we've had conversations about if we want to truly expand and recapture those students, what options are available to us in order to provide that kind of facility.
And, you know, all of our students matter to us. We have students in all kinds of different programs. And we're touching all these different schools, but I don't, you know, I wanna make sure we give equal value to kids that are in a different alternative type program and like that. So I don't know whether it's the same building or where it is, but.
Right.
Let's be intentional about it.
I agree with that. And I think we should be looking at improvements, right? So I can improve it. Having said that, I think it's absolutely right for us to signal leaving that building. We can't afford it. You can decide in the future if you wanna build a new school there, keep the land. But I think we're exiting the building personally. I think we should just be transparent about that. This is a chicken and egg conversation. We should just signal that and get on with the options analysis. And you're just gonna get, there's gonna be a future affordability discussion that you might go for it. So especially if we can integrate it into our other buildings that are existing and it's a better part of it. So I just guarantee it's, you know, we start talking, this year we're probably fine from a budget standpoint, but you start getting two percent every year, which is probably the future. Again, doing stuff like this to increase costs. So we've made a lot of tough decisions these last few years just to be trending water. And so what are the next few decisions like that? One of them is probably extending track. So.
This would be nice later, again. I know somewhere, some note, some email, some board doc, there is all the different programs that are in Trek.
Yeah.
And also knowing that there was a reason where some of those programs were not together. So I think that's also something that people need to realize. Some of those programs were not together for certain reasons. And trying to manage kids on different educational levels. You know, we had seventh through twelfth graders.
Yes.
You know, I mean, in the emotional, you know, this kid has maybe a behavior issue, this kid has a emotional. It's a lot because in the end of all, having these kind of same, and then disciplinary issues. I mean, as a person that has worked with those kids over there, I know it is complicated. It is much more complicated than the public and maybe even a board will understand the complexity of what's going on over there. And so being able to break that down into, it may be better for those kids to be as separate, just to be honest. So, yes, we should definitely, that's something from walking in the door here as a board member. It's been very concerning to me. So probably we do wanna make sure that whatever we're implementing there, implemented with fidelity and those kids are getting what they need, as well as the staff. And that we're getting the staff there as well, because that's also a problem is being able to get staffing there.
In routine.
Yeah.
And actually, yours is a really good point, cause some of those programs there serve a very small number of children. So we don't necessarily need an enormous amount of space in any given building. So, you know, at the secondary level, could some programs that serve nine, twelve kids be housed in all four of the high schools? And would each high school serve as a home for one of those programs, providing both distance between the programs, but also the ability to integrate to a gen ed, K-12, nine, twelve environment? So those are some of the kinds of conversations that we started having both with ourselves and with some of the community partners that we work with as we think about what the alternatives might be. But again, we went not far down that path because we first wanted to have a conversation with you.
So as I look at the document, the future facility projects for FMP consideration, just kind of running through that, you know, I look at, I look at Tate and I think, maybe I'm wrong, but what I'm hearing here is some interest in looking at athletic facility, gymnasium for Tate. Anybody opposed to that? Anybody? Okay. What I think we're also hearing is that Alexander, with our addition of WID resource allocation, which is a change in the way we do things, since the design and scope of that building. Plus looking at the enrollment projections report for future growth and land not even platted out and building permits not even issued in that area, we're gonna see exceptional growth in the Alexander area. We have, probably also have needs to continue a preschool program in that area. So I, I mean, I'm just gonna throw out there that I think Alexander, that one is something that should be a definite focus for us between growth, preschool, WID resource allocation. The last one I'm gonna say is that with Borlaug, you know, we had 1.7 budgeted four classrooms and it's a 1.9 for two and two. Plus the strong growth potential in the Borlaug area despite what's here because building permits aren't part, or because future planted area is not part of it. You know, if you look at 1.9 versus 1.7, that's a $200,000 difference. Trying not to, trying to avoid this mission creep thing. I really am. When I look at the rest of it, I think it's, to me, it falls under the, it'd be nice or we just did something there category. So I have a, I have a tough time. And when it comes to hills, the projections don't necessarily show that. But when I look at Alexander, Tate and the slight change at Borlaug from 1.7, 1.9, in addition to you, Dwayne, reevaluating the scope of all the projects on the FMP, we're back at that 190, no longer, a little under, 189.
So your reco, I'm just.
My reco is Alexander, Tate and.
The 184 scope.
Yeah.
Million dollar scope plus Alexander plus Tate and Borlaug at 1.9 million or whatever.
Cause I think that we should be utilizing the facility master plan as passed in 2013 with the slight tweaks in fifteen and these being slight tweaks, slight tweaks that are recommended by you guys, plus the, these potential that I'm throwing out there as the compass. That should be, we should be sticking as true to the 2013, 2015, et cetera, et cetera. That's the compass. That's the, that's the part of this, this whole thing behind us. But some of these other things, it's in the nice to have category, but I don't think it wants to be part of our bond language.
Brian, are you, are you saying that we would put those projects into the bond if we did the full, much a lot of bond? But that they wouldn't necessarily occur during the first seven years? It still might be further off what we're doing.
No.
Are you gonna push them up timeline?
I'm saying, I'm saying that they, well, Borlaug was already planned to be done in 2023, I think it was. But that they would be part of the next six years. If that's, if that's feasible from a, from a project management standpoint, if that's feasible.
Well, the only real change is the additions of Tate and they're already on the schedule. I don't see any problems with that.
But I think that we focus on, you know, the idea has been the first four years are funded by X, the last six years are funded by Y. And when we're going for Y, we should focus on that six-year time.
So I just wanted to, I got with you.
Yeah, no, thank you. Thank you.
So what would this point go on the table?
That's my reco.
Well, it's a miracle that I was going to the same place, so I'm fine going all in for the bond and.
I'm over here calculating numbers.
I think it's 189.7. But I think Tate is, it's the intent. And I think, what'd you say? We had a policy change in, back to Alexander and that makes sense now. There's probably some future increases in timing, like a wood improvement, but that could be decided. That doesn't need to decide today. There could be some other accelerations, but I think if we have that all in the bond and we pass it, then you got options to accelerate, so.
If you're going to me, I think I made it pretty clear last time where I was at. I would be okay with the stuff that Brian recommended.
Phil?
We're talking bond right now. I think it's too big. I feel that if it fails, would no clear plan B really put ourselves in a, in a problem? And I have, and to a certain extent, we're, we're painting the Golden Gate Bridge. You start at one end, you get to the other, you're coming back doing the other side. And this is, this is on the.
Do you have a proposal?
My proposal? Making sure that need is met. And even, this is, you know, I propose that, you know, the construction out there for athletics at West High, is that we've approved the design, but we delayed the construction. Don't turn the dirt, put it on hold. If the bond fails, we go ahead with it. If not, we have that money for actually. If not, we have that money for actual academic need. Immediate.
You mean if the bond passes, you go ahead?
Right, excuse me, yeah, it was, yeah, right. But we show the public that we're not holding them hostage and that way. But I, I have, I have real concerns with just the...
But what's your proposed project since that's a bond?
Well, I, I, well, like I say, I'm saying, I'm saying less. That, that project we put on hold, that frees up eight million dollars. I, you know, I continue, we go on, I would say we go reduced. At this point, I'm not, some of this stuff is kind of new and I'm kind of absorbing it. But I, I, like I say, I think that, you know, we're putting it per, making it extremely large. And as the one person who's listening post said, we don't all work for the university. And it's gotta be a big bill.
All right, anything else? Chris?
Well, it seems like one of the divisions disagrees. It's about how hard or how easy it will be to pass the bond in different forms. I look at 190 or whatever in that department. And I just think, I have a hard time seeing it passed. And, you know, I mean, you look around Iowa, bonds have failed on left and right. We look back and think of a bond that ever passed, like less than half of that number. Big spot in Iowa City that's ever passed, been about a third or less than that number. It's such a gamble. And I don't think we can count on people to just say, oh, you know, it's for the kids, yes, vote yes. Some people will say that. Some people don't look at the thing really carefully and start asking questions. I have a hard time with, with committing ourselves to capacity expansions that won't happen for six or seven years. We don't know what the enrollment's gonna be. I have a hard time with the idea of Alexander, you know, committing to putting new classrooms down. We don't know what the enrollment's gonna be. And we have seats elsewhere on the east side. You can just draw the district differently. Look at the, the trailer park on the west side of Alexander. And, you know, is that always gonna be there? And if Hills is really gonna decline in population, where the projections say, you know, there'd be places, ways to redraw those districts. So I just, I'm much more, I think it's a much more uphill battle. I would start much smaller, I would make more changes. And I just think a lot of the discussion to me has that feeling to it of the sunk costs fallacy. Well, you know, we've put so much into this plan, but now we can't really significantly change it. But if it's gonna be, you know, how many was it really, people have really rattle politically with whether we can do that and whether we'll get the support for it?
Do you have a proposal?
So my proposal would be, if it were me, again, I mean, I'm flexible to a point, but I'd start with a much lower number. It would probably have a man in it, it would have a new elementary school in it. Probably it would have north central addition of some type in it. And it would have some big east side renovation project, which means either southeast or city. Southeast is the one that's first on the schedule. But city affects, you know, arguably more people. I would, I would change the building decision. I don't think it's just a pile. I don't think you can go out to the public and sell that to people. I don't think you ever had the support of the public to begin with. Going into a bond closure with a, a bond proposal with a school closure? Not what they teach in Bond Passage 101, you know? And I don't know why you would choose to alienate that, or people with so little defense of it and no real transparency of what's gonna go on the site. We got people at the Listening Post saying, well, it's because city needs more parking lots and that's not gonna go over big blue quarters. I mean, I would make a lot of changes. I'd like to see a real commitment to a, a career and technical master plan, you know? I don't think we can just throw, throw things under this proposal and say it's for career and tech. I think it really needs to get thought out. That's where I could start. Yeah, I could be talked into a higher number than that, but I think I'm already up to about 15, 60 million dollars. You know, I could squeeze more things in there, maybe be talked into it, but I just, I still don't think we're being realistic about what's gonna pass.
Our request would be to see proposal already.
Well, I'm happy to write things, I like to write things down, so give me a little time and I can do it. But I got all that's a problem.
So, because I believe that I was elected by people who wanted to do certain things. And I wasn't here in, I was here in 2013, I wasn't a part of that. But I've gotten enough feedback from then, got enough feedback now of knowing our community's desire to invest in our kids. And so, on a personal note, that gives me some hope for society. But I do believe that we, my thing is, is I have to have a little faith in, in the folks that asked me to come here to believe that we have to at least try. I do not want to look back and say, all of my doubts, all of my own personal stuff prevented children from having what they needed to be successful in life. And I can't say I believe in equity and then say, oh, just, just a couple of y'all gonna get something. I just, I can't, I can't. Internally, that's a conflict within me to believe that I, I, I need to ignore what hundreds and hundreds of hours and tons of people have put out and said, this is important to us. We're willing to do what we need to pay for this. We realize that we're not gonna get hit with this all at the same time. And I know that there's some work on the end of, for us to do, to go out about getting this passed. And then I also, you know, a part of me, a part of me is kind of like, I keep hearing Craig in my head saying, if we don't have board, you know, if we don't have the board full of support in this, then we're killing it in the water. And so a part of me is a little heartbroken that, I mean, and people have their opinions, but it's just this part of me that's like, yes, let's do this, have faith in our, our folks that we can get this passed for our kids. And then this is other part of me to go, this is what can sink us. And so I'm, I'm struggling internally with, with the sinking and the hope at the same time. And so I, I would like to see Tate get a gym as a community partner who has paid for Tate students. To be able to participate is frustrating to know that I'm using my small amount of money to pay for our kids to be able to exercise. It's a problem, so I would love to see that out of here. And knowing that I live in Alexander neighborhood and that there's houses everywhere and there's steel building and there's mud everywhere in our neighborhood forever from the building, it's constant building, that I know that it's necessary to be able to put those children somewhere. Because we've known for years that Greenwood has been completely over capacity. That's why we built Alexander. That's why we tried to take some of these pressure points off and they just keep building more dang old houses. Which is fine, which is fine, but I'm just saying, with houses come children. And children need a place to have equitable places to go and to learn. And, and maybe, you know, some of you all haven't had the opportunity to be in my neighborhood, which is probably one of the most diverse neighborhoods in this area. But those children are deserving of equitable opportunities and space as well. So yes, I absolutely agree. And I, I don't want, I don't wanna let those kids down, I don't want to let their families down. So I do agree that we, especially now that I see some reductions and then we've had this opportunity to invest and add for some of our more disadvantaged students to be able to add those other projects. I believe that we should go after this bond with everything that we have within us. Whether everybody agree or not, I'm gonna give this everything I've got so we can do this for our children.
Doesn't really matter what you think, because you've got four votes, so I'm not...
I don't have that.
I don't know that it does. I don't know. So what I'm gonna focus on is if, if the project, if the plan is to go for the whole enchilada, then I, I would really like to see us figure out what our priorities are in the ordering of the projects. And we use the term access to opportunity gaps. I'd like, my opinion would be that should be our lens for which we're looking. And, and define what, what fits that. Now, some can say air conditioning fits that, some can say preschool fits that. You know, there's many things you could put in there. But I personally would not think that putting in extra big art rooms and music rooms should take priority over seats for children that are sharing classrooms in a library, for example, right now in Alexander. Or when I hear from the Kirkwood principal that they have a full list of kids that cannot attend preschool because they can't afford it, and there is a room for them at Kirkwood, that makes me very sad. And I don't see preschool anywhere here. I mean, you're talking about making existing preschool rooms bigger, but I don't see us adding any preschool facilities. Now, if we wanna talk about having impact on outcomes, I don't know that anyone would argue that preschool doesn't have an impact on outcomes. And I, I'm really concerned about that. Honestly, I mean, for me, that would, that would be top of the list because we've got children out there that are just going into kindergarten with no preschool because we don't have the facilities. And that's what Steve told us when we had our work, or Education Committee. So that's, that's the, that's the information he gave us, so I might have gone off of that. I see, you know, and then, for example, I see that Kirkwood's project isn't until 2021, but Garner's art room and music room happens in 2019. And I, I guess I wonder why, why it's that? And, and I know you'll, you'll give me the answers and, you know, I'll either agree or not agree. But, but I think if we're gonna talk to access, to up, access to opportunity gaps, my thought would be, if we wanna do something about the achievement gap, then we better be focusing on that above all. If we're gonna say we have a strategic plan that focuses primarily on outcomes and that is the driver for all of our decisions, and that should be the driver in this decision as well, for our, for our projects.
And my, so we're talking about education, right? We'll talk about, I'll just tell you my, because I put in my, my, my accelerator for Wood.
Well, you accelerated it, though, only, I mean, it's still, let's see. Well, let me ask you, what, how far would you accelerate it?
Well, I put in a year. I had no problem accelerating two years, depending on the way. Now, you find this like north central, push for one year, north central is, what'd you start to move it? I think you already moved up two years.
Yeah.
Good job.
Already.
But, you know, but here's, I'll just give you my perspective. I'm not gonna die in the sword of those, because next year, when we pass the bond, you'll have a whole lot more opportunity to accelerate it. And I wouldn't get too kind of in the timing right now. It's really a decision we're making with the bond. You can always, as we do in the updates, you can always choose to accelerate. And I think there'd be very good, you know, rationale based on grid day and everything else to accelerate. But that, that was one of the issues with, you know, when I started, I think my proposals are perfectly good to, you know, carve with the bond, make it smaller. But definitely would not enable you next year, if the bond passes, to accelerate or, because it wouldn't be funded. You wouldn't know that accelerate would, because it wouldn't be funded.
Well, unless it was one of the projects that replaced something else.
Yeah, but then we have to go reshuffle. Here's the thing, if we go reshuffle all that, everybody gets excited about it. You know, you just change the plan. There's some elements I'll stick to it, this has the spirit of 2013, we can always come back and accelerate.
And my, my thought on that would be, we, if we go through the whole thing, we've made a commitment that we're doing, we're doing the projects. We're not gonna back out of the commitment to do that.
I think it's confirmed.
It's just a matter of when we do it. And I think it's our job as board members who first and foremost think about educational outcomes and what will drive that the most effectively. And, and I would do, if it were me, I would go beyond just adding a few rooms at Kirkwood. I would, I would do a needs assessment of the district and have, this is part of the reason why I asked about the free reduced lunch numbers in our preschools. I would find out, do we need more preschool rooms in Alexander? Do we need more preschool rooms at Wood? Do we need a freestanding preschool center somewhere that's accessible to kids that aren't getting preschool right now? What is it, and now, what you'll all tell me is that there's no way we can do that in two weeks and we gotta have a decision. But it's not in the budget, so, you know...
Again, all I'll say is, if we pass this 190 million dollar deal line, we'll have significantly more flexibility to address those needs.
So maybe, I think I'm crazy, but maybe we add, you know, five million or something that we don't specify where it goes, but we say it's for preschool expansion.
Well, I don't think we can do that.
We have to specify where it goes.
But that's where Pepper and Future Save, you'll have some dollars in your, in your, you know, used to do stuff there.
How much though?
Well, we borrow against what, 60, 70% of the money?
Yes.
What, is it two thirds?
It's, it's, well, we borrow 75%, we leave 25%, or pay as you go.
Are you allowed to use that?
We use it all the time. Where do you think we pay for land acquisition and things like that out of? We, we use that money all the time.
It's when you get there, so, right.
It's annual.
It comes available.
I see, when it comes available.
So we earmark some of it for TARP payments.
That's why I say Pepper.
Revival bond payments, we earmark some of it for lifecycle funds.
Think of Pepper being half lifecycle fund, so it can't be made, right? But there's some flexibility now, some of the others, you know, maybe 30% of flex, Pepper will help us, yeah.
So...
And, and I'll finish, Brian.
Oh, sorry, I was just gonna tell my, 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 just, pardon.
Go for it.
No, just, just, when I'm looking at the enrollment, it looks projected out pretty flat, 360, 370, 380, right? And the addition, this plan is a, is six classrooms, it's 150 student addition, which would give us ample room to do, to address those issues. So I, I, and I'll admit that I had looked at that till you brought it up, so thank you for bringing it up.
Plus for structure damage.
Right.
Well, and, and along with that, I would say, I'm, I'm glad to know that the projections do not include all of the new developments going in, because there's several new high density housing things that are going in in Corvile and Corvile Central boundaries. And maybe preschool for Corvile Central needs to be shipped to Kirkwood if we can put six rooms in there and make them all preschool. I don't know, maybe there's efficiencies in, in putting them all together. I, I don't know, it's just something I'm putting out there.
Yeah, I'm just gonna make this one, small bond or no bond, a lot less flexibility. We get this 190 down and you can have a lot of flexibility in the future.
So, yeah, so take that for what it is. For me, it is, a lot of it's in the, the order of the projects.
So, I think you did ask one question, if we answer quickly, why is Garner ahead of Kirkwood? Well, it was because of the explosive growth at the time in North Liberty. And so now we're planning a new elementary school in there, it will lessen the burden of that particular building. So, but that's why it was up there, is because there was, we were running out of seats fast.
And, and so maybe Garner means that, you know, not happen in 2019, since we're putting in a new building. The other thing I wanted to throw in is, you know, I, I think it's responsible to consider the fact that our political landscape right now means that vouchers are a real possibility for our state. I hope they don't happen, but it's a real possibility. And I, I do fear a little bit, trying to guess where, you know, where the impact would be on that. I don't know. Will our enrollment go down? Will we have fewer students? Will, I don't know. I know you all think I'm crazy, but, but, I mean, let's face it, it's being talked about right now. Bill was introduced already. So I, I don't know. Just for what it's worth, I'll put that out there.
All I can say is you can only make the decision based on what we know, you know, this week, next week.
Yeah, except that with, with the bond, we can't change that decision.
True, but, you know, just part of a big organization. Just things you know, just things you don't know.
I don't, I don't think it's any secret that two weeks ago, I sat in that chair there and said, you know, we should be going for, I can't play out, 120, 125. You were saying 85. I've heard other numbers and Paul sitting over there saying, all in.
All in, baby.
All in, that's right. And for me, you know, that discussion, I, I think was very good, that, that we had that discussion. Because for me, since then, you know, between the Listening Posts, meetings with various individuals around the community, electeds for municipalities, and so on and so forth, I, I'm not questioning unified support across, across multiple municipalities and elected, and elected groups of elected representatives, which I was before. I think that's critical. I think that's really a, a... I think that's really a strong message. Another thing that I heard was, there were people that said, you know, we're going to, we want to volunteer and we want to work to lift this bond message, but we're going to be enthusiastic if we go all in. Because we realize that that's a broad statement from an education-based community to do that. And that energy was palpable. The energy in those discussions was palpable. I just, you know, I think had we not had that discussion two weeks ago, we're sitting up here, you know, down in the weeds, looking at all these little details, oh, I don't know, should we do this, should we do that? But I think that in the last two weeks, I looked behind us and saw this whole group of people that want us to go all in. People who were energized. So that's why I'm saying all in, but I also say we shouldn't, we shouldn't go above the 190-ish that we've been talking about forever. I've already had discussions with folks saying this is what, this is what, you know, this is on the page, this is what we've been looking at since 2015. So, I just want to give some perspective on.
So Steve.
And I'm not, and let me just, I'm sorry, Bill, clarify. If you, something I think is important, you know, I'm very passionate about supporting kids and stuff. If people have varying opinions, I think that's okay if you have varying opinions. I'm not, you know, whether it's preschool or more, I mean, I think that that should also be said. It's not like, I'm not going to speak to you no more because you don't agree with me. Because that happens sometimes here, and I think it's ridiculous. What I'm saying is, is that, you know, I think at the end of the day, we all care about, I'm making assumptions, that we care about kids because we're so, I don't know, we're a school because we're getting so rich sitting here right now. But I'm just saying that, you know, that we're here for children and we have our various opinions about it. But my hope is that wherever we land at, whatever we end up doing, I'm just hoping that we all will support, support the decision and support our kids because I think that's really important. And that's something that I did hear come out at our listening posts is that people are like, look, if the decision is made, even if you don't like it, let's get behind it and try to lift up things for our children. And so I'm hoping that even if we're talking and having this discussion and we don't necessarily agree with the manner, we don't necessarily agree, then that's fine, but then whatever it is that we decide, and we remember that we are a board and we are a small percentage of a vote, but at the end of the day, we're here to push and uplift our district. And so that's what I'm hoping from you all, the colleagues, that wherever we land, I change my mind tomorrow, that we will be able to, wherever the vote lands, support, support it as an entire board to support our kids.
Well, I got to tell you, I'm going to be the dissenter as to that principle. There are proposals I could support that aren't the proposal that I would make, but I made it very clear when I was running that I wasn't going to be a cheerleader for whatever the proposal was, no matter what the proposal was. I had real reservations about committing to capacity additions that our projections do not show any need for, and like Laurie says, I'm going to start on vouchers tomorrow. We're going to be committed to those things even if they're six years out. I mean, that's an obstacle.
And I apologize when it came around that it didn't really get in everything. Ultimately, the people are in this, and I think what Natasha was saying about, we're all, and I don't want this to be the type of a thing that if you don't spend $194 million, you don't care about kids because that shouldn't be what the discussion's about. And I have talked for a long time about a serious commitment for technical education. That's, I believe, transforming the learning environment, that's part of it personally. And I think there's a lot of areas to bear an eye on as well. And before, when we were discussing what we wanted, a special ad on there, too. I think that there's, there's going to be needs for those potentially in all of our schools that we need to make sure that that's, that's a consideration. And I agree with Laurie on the preschool aspect of it. We had our presentation, the committee on that, that there was an express need for extra space. And I think, you know, when we look at the projections, and I mean, Bashford paying for the projections, either we, you know, value them or not. And, you know, construction, one spot or another, depends on the economy and, who knows, like you said, predict that, you might fortune in a particular bond yourself. I have concerns with eliminating existing capacity with the closure of the school and ignoring kind of the numbers that we have where some things are going faster than others and we can change that going down the road. However the community comes out, we will work and make sure that the best is provided for all of our students, every student.
So we're at the seven-minute warning, so we're going to stop at ten, which we normally do. So Steve, are you clear for next week? Right? So I think we're asking for the.
I, well, I'm sorry, I just want to be, I just want to paraphrase really quick. Did I just hear that if the board makes the decision, of which we're all a part of, that you're not going to support it?
Yes. If I don't, if I feel like you do it, I'm a fiduciary, I am fiduciary to this district.
We all do.
Yeah, but, you know, I have to go by one, I'm thinking of what I believe about this. And if that seems to be like a really unwise commitment for this district.
The board makes a decision.
No, this is the sort of intolerance toward dissent that drives me crazy.
It's not intolerance.
If you have wonderful arguments to make for this bond, it's going to pass. It doesn't matter whether I'm there agreeing with it or not, make the arguments. But there's going to be disagreement. Now, there are some proposals I simply will not support. But I'm not saying everybody has to do it my way. There's lots of proposals I could support.
Does that mean?
I just felt that would be a significant.
I mean, I'm going to do what I always do. I'm going to tell people what I really think about the proposal. I think there's things in there that are really important, I'm happy to say that. But I'm not going to tell you right now that no matter what the board agrees on, I'm going to pass on it.
No.
I don't think I was saying that.
That's not what I'm saying.
I'm saying, even if you vote, I was, I was suggesting, because you can't make nobody do nothing. Y'all grown, I ain't your mom. What I'm saying is, is if the board decides that this is what we're going to do, even if you, you know, I'm just saying, like, at some point, if, you know, everybody's like, okay, let's support this, are you saying that, my understanding is that you're saying, I don't care if the rest of the board is supporting all of this, I'm going to not.
I have no judgment about it. And, you know, I think it had not sensed a whole lot of eagerness to compromise, you know? And if you got a couple people on the board who are elected for specific reasons, if not real concerns, maybe compromise with them. Maybe you get to your seven. That's how you get to seven, here, not just by getting enough people and then trying to shame the other people. If you go to the voters that way and try to act like they're obligated to vote for the bond or else they're bad people, that's not going to work, you know?
That's not.
And here we are, you know, tonight, one week before we have to settle this, somebody asks me, well, what would you like to see?
Well, guys, come on, we've talked about this in September. The schedule, the schedule is no surprise.
Always been really seeking out anything.
Check out the work session. So check out the work session in September, the schedule is the schedule. I just got to tell you, I put my thoughts in writing. I would appreciate seeing the counter proposals. I put out proposals. It's helping me to come to my final decision, so I would appreciate seeing the counter proposals.
I'm going to have to write it down again. I mean, it's getting pretty late. It was pretty late when we started this process.
This is why it's, I'm, this is why it's, you can't have everything decided at any point in time. That's why it's not going to be a process where we're able to. So Steve, just trying to wrap this up.
So.
Let you go over what you want us to do, so I make sure.
The sheet.
Yep.
I think we said Borlaug to 1.974.
Check those numbers.
He's going to check, he's going to check the numbers. He's going to swatch.
I'm sure I just left it off.
Yep, you can swatch.
Add Alexander and add Tate.
Yep.
Can we move it down? I can't remember where we went.
Well, we proposed moving it down a year already, but maybe we need to do it. I don't like to be any misalignment to push her further.
Well, and is it all right with you if we look at, since we're adding Borlaug, Alexander, and Tate in there? Is it all right if we, with Alexander and Tate, look at the timeline, just to make sure that we balance? So from workload standpoint, we want to make sure we can do it.
That's our responsibility.
Let's put it this way, if you got proposal three.
Yep, we will. I just want to, you might see some more gray dates in there because we might try to prove something wrong.
Let's make sure it's added.
Yes.
You're sufficiently, you know.
Yep.
I want for some.
And I put in my note to move them.
Right. That's what I was hearing, that's what my notes say.
And we've got kids in classrooms that are, you know, taking up the library.
Understood.
Anything to push on?
We just want, we'll want to look at what's in April, 19, 20, if we're going to move them up in there. So I just wanted to make sure I had permission to look at timeline.
Yes.
Yes.
Especially accelerations.
Yes. I understand.
All right, anything else for tonight? So next week, so next week when we come back, I mean, the decision we got makes the G O bond, right? And that's a formal vote.
We never got to a second agenda, I think.
Real quick, we should take.
What's a second agenda? Well, the separate, the bond had some attachments.
It was all the same conversation, I thought.
Okay, so I think somebody, we should take that.
The other thing is, we never really discussed what Plan B would be. I don't know if that's something we want to discuss at some point. Like if, I can't remember who suggested it. Somebody suggested we maybe halt on current projects.
Yes, I suggested that the.
Still suggested tenant West Highway, athletics.
The.
I have no interest in putting in your projects. Well, we just tried to stick to the bond.
Right, well, I just, I suggested, I'll let you know what's not going to. It's the additional gymnasium and the 8.6 or whatever million we got going in West High that's in design right now is, 8.9 million that's in design that Phase One of West High. We save that money in reserve as a possibility, possibility that the public fails to reach 60%, and we have money to make sure that everything comes to a screeching point. And that the new elementary and those man and those things, that we have some type of contingency.
I understand. I'm going to first stop in your project myself because you were just going to delay the, back there, condition our list.
And how many, and I, well, I might get offensive to anybody on AC, but before the facilities master plan, the district didn't close a single day for heat. And if we had adopted a start date of the day after Labor Day, without, in the last 10 years, we would have only missed school three days.
Well, except you would have later June.
Excuse me?
Except for the June days where they missed.
No, no, those would have been included. That includes June. Those were the questions I asked earlier.
I think what Chris is saying, if you started later in September, you would go later into June.
You checked out later June days for weather. Didn't you?
Yes. Just what?
Now, again, early dismissals are likely to be, right?
No, I understand. And like I say, you know, transforming the 21st century learning environment, I believe includes current technical education that needs a five-minute bell schedule. You have a lot more options with that when it passes 190 million dollar bond. Like I say, the public will decide.
Any other 8 million dollars being postponed, it makes it sound crazy.
You probably have to decide.
Well, there's no other answer.
I just, I just wanted a question.
It's a separate, you could just, you could align next week to 190 million G O bond.
Great, so the earliest that a, that a Plan B can come out would be, would the public would be like April, right? April of 2018?
For a vote?
Six months.
Six months?
You have to wait six months, and so we would miss the February date that's allotted to us, so we would have to move that to the April.
So we'd miss a whole bidding season, too, as far as construction.
Construction season. And I'd like to start on the next one.
So I think, well, since the last decision, if we want to put a Plan B, I'd say we go for Plan A.
Well, again, Plan B is a full stop effectively. We build in one of the projects, maybe two, and then you could go back for a smaller bond, but you're going to lose all here and then.
I'd say we pass Plan A.
I'd say we.
Tap into the energy.
Once you start picking projects, we're going to stop right now. I don't know where you start and stop, but.
All right, we're at 10 o'clock. Anything else for tonight?
So just clarification, next Tuesday, special meeting. We'll have those numbers back and we'll, basically a motion on what we're going to go for.
The motion we have to have with the G O bond, debate some of the other facilities master plan stuff for doing or leaving, but I think we got to have a thought. All right.
As a meeting now, we're.
Right, and I, it is a meeting.
Yeah, sorry, there's a lot of confusion.
Right, so I saw that community comments, some of us in that, but it's going to be a regular board meeting.
Tina Mushman here?
It's a mood.
Two seconds.
Second.
One favor, say that.